Good morning, everybody. Okay, I'm starting to see some faces. Hello, team. Okay. So you can see the agenda that we have up right now. We're going to be doing roll call. We'll hold some space for public comment and then we're going to get into our agency presentations. So before we do roll call, because I think we're, folks are still probably getting their mics and stuff adjusted as they're coming on. I do want to kind of set an expectation for this meeting. Because we're having so many agency presentations, it's going to be really difficult for us to have a dialogue today. Before we left for break in December, I did kind of call this a little bit of like, oh, we're looking at somebody's email. Before, in December, when we were talking about these next couple of meetings, I did mention that this is going to be kind of a season of listening sessions. Because we have so much content that we're asking for, it, we're not going to have a lot of time for discussion among ourselves. So one thing I'm going to ask is that for today, we try to limit the use of our chat to gathering follow-up questions for the presentations. So because we're not going to have a lot of time for that kind of Q and A and dialogue, I wanted to try to use the chat as almost a mini scribe kind of thing for any follow-up questions you have for the departments as they're doing their presentations. So when you have a follow-up question, put it in the chat, you want to specify who the follow-up question is directed to and then what your question is. And then we will ask the departments to follow up and provide any supplemental information after the presentation. So just an example, DAS has a presentation, let's say during their presentation, they didn't speak to something I wanted to know. So to DAS, my question is, what is the timeline for getting back to departments when your review is requested or needed? So that's the way we want to try to use the chat throughout this presentation for today. If we have anybody on the phone, please let us know so that we can gather your questions separately. Okay. And so to open us up, we're going to be talking today about payment. So our presentation to, all of our presentations today are about payment models that prioritize cost recovery. We had a long list of questions that we submitted to the department that came from our jam board activity. And so our opening question for today, when I call on you, although there may be many, just name one payment structure issue you would like to see solved. So of all the ones that we could possibly talk about today, what is a payment structure issue that you would like to see solved? And I'll start just to model, so call on me for say here. And my urgent problem to solve is consistency. I think we need to have much more consistency in payment models within departments and across departments. Swaytha.
Hey, everyone. Good morning. Swaytha and Batish here, pronounced, present. I think one of the biggest issues, as well as just relying on reimbursements being given in a timely manner through, for our payment models, especially with contracts and grants with the state. So yeah, I will stop there and pass it to the next person.
Thank you. Debbie. Debbie, are you with us today? Maybe not yet. Heather. No, Heather. Jonathan.
Coming on Jonathan for DOJ.
G R O U X.
Yes. Since I'm counsel to agencies, I have, I have no recommendation right now.
Okay. Tamara.
Good morning. I'm having some computer issues, so my apologies that my camera's not on. I can't get in with my video machine, but I'll keep trying. But anyways, Tamara, she her pronouns. And I think for me, it's, I, I like your Mercedes consistency, but I'd want to say simplicity. I'm thinking of multiple systems where you have to use two or three systems that match in order to get your reimbursement.
Indeed, thank you. Katrina. Not yet. Donish. I see. Donish here.
Hello.
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Having a little tech issue here. I think it's pretty been, much been mentioned, but timeliness is a big one. And then when contracts are delayed, in particular, you know, over a period of months, sort of the benefit of some flexibility on the backend. So when we have to zig and zag and cover costs, what can we do to sort of compensate for that?
Thank you. Felicity.
Good morning here. And I'll go with timeliness too. Thanks, Mercedes.
Thank you. Bettina.
Bettina, I'm here. I think simplicity and timeliness is the key for me.
Mary Ann.
Good morning. For me, the big one is the payments after the biennium, getting the templates and getting paid in any timely manner, those first few months of the new biennium.
Containment across that fiscal year. Leah.
I would say upfront payments as opposed to reimbursements.
And Helen.
Morning. Leah took mine. I was going to say upfront or advanced payment.
Thank you. So I'm going to go back just to see if any of our absent folks did arrive before, or did have arrived so far. So Debbie, Heather. Yeah, I think that was the two, our two absences, or and Katrina. Debbie, Heather, or Katrina? Has anyone arrived since I called your name last? Okay. Senator Campos.
Good morning. I am present. I know timeliness has been mentioned. I will add continued emphasis on that one.
Thank you. And Representative Conrad. Okay. So that is up for our roll call. Do we have anybody here who would like to provide public comment? It looks like we have one person. Amy, are you able to let them unmute so they can share? Yes, he's unmuted. Go ahead, Philip.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity. For the record, I'm Philip Kennedy Wong, the Public Policy Director for the Nonprofit Association of Oregon. Appreciate all the hard work that all of you have taken in terms of the time to be on this task force. It's very important to the nonprofit sector. I did submit some written testimony that I wanted to share with you, although some of you have already stolen my thunder, which is good. That is, we've compiled a list of solutions for this task force to consider that are payment models that prioritize full cost recovery. And I'll just tick off a couple of them. And I know you've got a busy agenda, but I just wanted to make sure folks saw this. These are all solutions on this list. Hopefully you have it. There are seven that they're not mutually exclusive. They can be all implemented en masse, so it doesn't have to be one or the other. I'll start off with timely payments being made within 30 days, eliminating the use of reimbursements or matching funds for grants, upfront payments, multi-year contracts and grants that allow for inflation adjusted or multi-year, or sort to allow for the continuation of services is something that I think Mary Ann had mentioned. Adjustable funding levels that are based on not just inflation rates, but some sort of comparable metrics that allows essentially the cost of providing services to keep up with time. And then the last item I will bring up is line item number seven, if you're looking at the document that I submitted, a sufficient administrative rate. And I'm happy to report that the federal government right now, they are considering a 15% de minimis rate, which is something that the nonprofit sector supports. And if that could be implemented statewide for grants, that would be incredible. So we certainly hope that all of these seven solutions will find their way into your recommendations. And I mean, we weren't happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding the submitted written testimony that we provided.
Thank you very much, Philip. Did we have anyone else who wanted to provide public comment today? Welcome, Heather.
We're expecting quite a bit of snow today and tomorrow, so it's kind of fun. It looks like a snow globe outside right now. Seriously, it's crazy.
Yes, I have seen the weather reports. I think it's going to be fun all around the state in the next couple of days. And thank you, Philip, for the public comment. I do want to mention to folks that there were, there was an additional public comment, a written comment that was also submitted. You should have gotten a link from Amy in your email to where you can find those public comments, so you can review them. Okay, so with that, we shall turn it over to the departments. Each department will have about 15 minutes to get through their presentation, and then we will take a break. So let's start in the order that we have on the agenda. DAS, that means that you are up.
Good morning, everybody. For the record, my name is Kelly Mix. I am the State Chief Procurement Officer for the State of Oregon. And my position resides in the Department of Administrative Services. And I'm happy to be here today to speak to the task force about grants and contracts and, and, and payment models as it relates to those. So thank you for your time today. If you go to the next slide, please. Just as a little bit of-
Here's somebody typing. Would everyone mind muting unless you're speaking?
On the screen in front of you now is just a brief, high-level overview of the Department of Administrative Services as it relates to, to grants and contracts. So the department is led by the DAS Director, who is currently Barry Leslie. Director Leslie also serves as the Chief Operating Officer for all of state government, reports to the governor. Under, under Director Leslie is our Agency Deputy Director and the Chief Administrative Officer for the State of Oregon. That's Debbie Dennis, who is a member of this task force. And, and under Debbie are two positions that are, and offices that are specific to this conversation. One is the office I lead, which is the State Chief Procurement Office, Office. And the other is the State Chief Financial Officer. Under my office and the procurement office is where we manage contracts and the Oregon Forward Program, and I'll be speaking more about both of those. And then the State Chief Financial Officer is the office within Department of Administrative Services that, that manages all of our statewide financial functions. But specific to this discussion, manages bonds and grant activity on behalf of the department. I, I will say that Department of Administrative Services does very little grant activity in terms of volume and types. And I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. If we could go to the next slide, please. So current scope of partnerships. The, the task force asked the agencies to speak about current scope of partnerships as it relates to grants and contracting. As I mentioned, State of Oregon, through Department of Administrative Services, does very little in, in terms of grants and has very little visibility into whether or not we are contracting with nonprofits versus for-profit or other organizational constructs with vendors that we work with. But as of the January 1st of this year, we're currently reviewing seven contracts with nonprofit firms, and I'll speak a little bit more about Oregon Forward in a moment. The estimated dollar value of active grants with nonprofits that, that we currently have within the agency are the following. We have lottery revenue bonds, which, which are funds that come through lottery revenue and then are distributed through a grant process. In 2325, we, we have been authorized by the legislature to issue five grants with lottery revenue bonds. Those grants will total about $20 million, $700,000. And for the 2123 budget period, which is now closed, we had seven lottery revenue bond grant agreements in place, and the value of those was estimated at just over $33 million. Our Chief Financial Office also administers ARPA grants. These are American Rescue Plan Act grants of funding remaining through the pandemic era, era of federal legislation that provided funding to states, including Oregon. The ARPA grants currently and the state of Oregon through DAS, I should say DAS itself has 110 active grants on utilizing those ARPA grant funds, and those total about $102 million. Those are active and ongoing. And then the third category of grants are general fund grants. These are direct grants that the legislature directs staffs to distribute to specific entities. An example of this might be grants that Department of Administrative Services provides, for example, to the CASA program in Oregon. These are non-competitive grant opportunities. These are legislatively directed specifically to those programs. And currently, those general fund grants, there are 46 of those administered through DAS, and those total a little over $63 million. Grant reimbursements are processed as they are received by agencies and received by DAS. DAS currently doesn't have a mechanism for tracking sort of the timeframe between when we receive a reimbursement request and when that reimbursement is actually made to the grantee. So we don't have a mechanism to do that within DAS. And then I, I would just add here that in general, public contracts, which are different from grants, and I'll speak to that. Typically, public contracts are not on a dispersment type model. Contract payments are more of a fee for service basis. So the state is invoiced after receipt of goods or services or, and, and that we have validated receipt of that good or that service. And then payment is made after receipt of an invoice. And that, that's the same whether it's with a nonprofit firm or for-profit firm. Generally speaking, the contracts themselves will speak to the payment terms and conditions, and occasionally the contracts will have language to speak specifically to turnaround time on the state's part for payments. But I, I think I can safely say in, in no instance, at least where DAS is concerned, though our contracts contain language that promises vendor payments in anything less than 30 days from receipt and validation of an invoice. So I like, I've offered that information. And if we could go to the next slide, please. One of the questions asked by the task workers around training and training specific to, to, to grant administrators and folks within the agency involved in grants. The Department of Administrative Services does not offer specific training to, to our employees on grants. However, we do require all of our employees, and for that matter, by statute, all State of Oregon employees who administer contracts to complete contract administration training, which consists of 11 modules. And as you can see on the screen, there are a number of those topics. And, and a number of those are also applicable to grants when we look at things in terms of how you administer agreements, how you negotiate, if a negotiation is appropriate, how you do amendments and changes. That, that type of training is broadly applicable to administering grants as it is to contracts. But our training does not speak specifically to grants. Other agencies that you're going to hear from today, I think, will have more to talk to you about in terms of what kind of training they may require for grant administrators. But because, as I had mentioned earlier, we do very little grant work in the Department of Administrative Services. We do not have a grant-specific training. And then I just wanted to mention that we, we routinely have opportunities to have contact with nonprofit and nonprofit associations in terms of helping them understand the rules and, and regulations and procurement terms. But again, that is more focused on contracting with our agency versus grant making. So I just wanted to make that point. We could go to the next slide, please. So this is just kind of a recap of what I spoke to at the beginning in terms of the three different categories of grants that the Department of Administrative Services manages. LBR grants, again, indirect or administrative costs are not, that are not directly related to capital projects are not allowed. So these grants are very specific in how the funds can be used and what types of administrative costs can be applied towards any sort of a de minimis equation. And again, these grants are legislatively approved and legislatively targeted. So in general, they don't result from a competitive process, but they result from the legislative process. So in general, they don't result from a competitive process, but they result from the legislative process. Same is true with ARPA grants. Generally, agencies, the default with the grantees is a 10% de minimis. But there are occasions where those rates are negotiated differently from a federal cognizant for administrative costs. And as we heard earlier from the public testimony, the federal government is looking at making some adjustments upward on those de minimis pieces. So our default is to 10%, but there is an opportunity on occasion to negotiate something different from that as a direct rate. And then there's also the opportunity under ARPA grants to opt out of administrative costs altogether. And that, I don't want to say that's rare, but that typically we will see that in the case if the sub-grantee or the firm or entity that we're granting to is able to carry that administrative burden, perhaps if they're a public entity of some sort, so they can direct the fullness of the grant amount to whatever program they're working. So there's those kind of three areas of how those administrator costs are handled under the ARPA grants. Well, the third broad category for the Department of Administrative Services are general fund grants. These, as I mentioned earlier, are directly directed by the legislature through legislative action that DAS will grant a specified amount of funds to a specific entity for a specific purpose. And indirect or administrative costs that are indirectly related to the purpose are not allowed. So this is very restrictive in terms of the grant awardee has to be able to demonstrate that the claimed cost is 100% tied to implementing that grant. For example, if the cost is for a position, then you have to be able to demonstrate that that position, every dollar of that position that's being reimbursed equates to time spent specifically on the program. It doesn't allow for some of the more broad definitions of overhead costs that can sometimes be grouped into administrative costs or de minimis costs. So those are very specific. So I just wanted to touch us again on those three types. And these are the only three categories of grants that the Department of Administrative Services administers. We do not provide, in generally speaking, your typical request for grant application, those types of processes. All three of these are specifically directed by the legislature for specific purposes. So if we could go on to the next slide, please. And then in terms of payment schedules, the lottery revenue bond grants are reimbursement basis only. So the grant agreements will spell out specifically what the grantee must submit to the Department of Administrative Services to validate costs, program costs, or program investments. And then once those requests are approved, funds are released. ARPA grants and general fund grants both use a full dispersment model. Once the fully executed agreement is in place, so in both of those cases, the legislature has directed us to grant $1 million to an entity. The entire amount of that grant is done typically in a single payment. Occasionally, it may be distributed on a fiscal year basis, 50% for each fiscal year. But it's an upfront upon qualification and the agreement in place, direct dispersment of those funds. In both of those cases, there is often a requirement for after-the-fact reporting and auditing to assure the grant funds are used as intended. And then to reconcile prompt payment, especially for the LRB grants for reimbursement only. The Department of Administrative Services reconciles financial documents from those entities such as bank statements. They monitor payments. And then all of that is done through our accounting department to validate any dispersness that need to be made. So again, very, very prescriptive and direct based on those three different types of grants that the department administers. We could go to the next slide, please. So in terms of payment structures, we do not have any attestation processes involved with grants or contracts specific to payments. We do, as I mentioned, have responsibility for grant programs. But as I said, all three of those types of programs require legislation to be initiated. We do not currently have any direct contracts with nonprofit organizations. Though the department does administer the Oregon Forward Program. And I thought maybe I would spend just a minute introducing you to the Oregon Forward Program. The Oregon Forward Program, formerly known as the QRF Program, for some of you that may recall that terminology, is a program that was established by the legislature back in 1977 to create employment opportunities for Oregonians with disabilities. That program says that state, all public contracting agencies in Oregon, which includes the state, local governments, school districts, cities, counties, whatever that government entity might be, they must, those public agencies must purchase goods and services from these Oregon Forward contractors if an Oregon Forward contractor can provide that good or service. So you may see, for example, in this space, we have a lot of janitorial services. We have a lot of grounds maintenance services. We have some manufacturing things such as uniforms, first aid kits, those types of things. But so these are public contracts, not grants. But these are public contracts that occur in a sort of a sheltered marketplace, if you will. They're not competitively bid. If the firm has been validated by the Department of Administrative Services as providing employment opportunities to Oregonians with disabilities and 60% or more of the direct labor utilized in providing those goods or services is provided by Oregonians with disabilities, that nonprofit is certified as an Oregon Forward nonprofit. And state agencies must consider their goods and services in their contracting process. This is the only area where we in Department of Administrative Services have any visibility as to whether or not we're contracting with nonprofits versus for-profit entities. And so I just wanted to take a moment to mention that program. We could go to the next slide, please.
So I'm going to interrupt you just quickly because it actually has already been 15 minutes. I know. Yeah, I'll give you a minute to close up.
Thank you, Mercedes. So just briefly, the rest of the slides really talk to about contract terms. And contract terms are negotiated with vendors. And our slide and our report, we'll talk through that in more detail. But I think the important part is 85% of the contracts that DAS awards are based on multiple factors, of which cost is only one. And 15% of our contracts are awarded through a bid process where cost is the deciding factor. So I think I'll leave it there. But please, as you look through our report and the slide presentation, send forward any additional questions. And we're happy to report back. And thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much. Next up on our list, we have the Department of Early Learning and Care. And thank you, folks, for putting those follow-up questions. We'll be asking the departments to respond and writing to any of the follow-up questions that come in. The Department of Early Learning.
Good morning. Thank you, everyone. My name is Teresa Waite, and I use she/her pronouns. And I am the Grants Management Director for the Department of Early Learning and Care. And I have provided what I think is a fairly long memo. So hopefully, I can counter that by kind of walking through this at a high level on the presentation piece. Sorry, I'm just trying to get a look at my own screen to see where everything is. Thank you. So thank you for allowing us to present this information. We are, as a new agency, going through a lot of review and reflection on process. So this was a great moment to be able to present kind of where we're at right now. And this task force is a great opportunity for us to look at where we could go and what we can do. I'm going to start, if my slides will let me, there we go, with the organizational structure of decision-making with grants and contracts. And the day-to-day decisions for grants and contracts are done at the programmatic and grant management level. So we have a team of a program manager and a grant management specialist. The program manager works primarily with the programmatic aspects, the work of the grant. And the fiscal grant manager deals with the money. And they work together and collaborate to come to decisions between program and fiscal compliance. Outside of our normal day-to-day work, we will staff our recommendations for actions that are outside of the norm with our unit directors. Typically, those involve really unique requests from either grantees or the public or someone or complaints. And those are the things that we'll staff up with unit directors. Then across our programs, we have the Chief of Operations, Chief of Programs, or Exec Team, who might take some high-level decision-making that could impact how we operate our grants across our programs. Or if there is something that might involve a big impact to a program that could be more public or require some more community engagement or decision-making when something's going on. Ultimately, funding recommendations are made by the program manager with the grant manager support. The unit director, budget office confirms. Sometimes, these decisions will go to our agency director and other executive leadership before they're sent by procurement. But that is generally the order that those kinds of decisions go. So we have a variety of agreements. And as you can see here, most of our agreements involve services to children and families, services to the programs that support children and families in various ways. We have agreements, primarily grants for our programmatic work, and contracts for some of our supporting work, such as our contract with Western Oregon University as what we call the CCRNR Central Entity, which supports the work of our childcare resource and referral offices. So, and then... But most of our grants, I'm just, most of our agreements listed here don't include agreements that are in progress or operational agreements like building leases, janitorial services, the things we as an agency need just to operate our own. We didn't put that in this list. So are grantees and contractors not separated by whether a nonprofit is the recipient? Because we have a number of business types that we work with. Our agreements provide preschool promise services, relief nurseries, Healthy Families Oregon, Oregon prenatal to kindergarten, and could keep going on and on. And that means that depending on the requirements of the program, there's a variety of types of businesses that do this work. Many of them are nonprofit, but we also have universities, for-profit entities, and others. This is often dependent upon the requirements around the funding we're using. Sometimes, we have a directive to grant to nonprofits, such as relief nurseries, which not only need to be nonprofits, but they have to meet other criteria. So as that is an example, tells you that our funding often drives what type of business we're working with. Our expenditures funding is primarily reimbursement. However, we collect reimbursement information using what's called an expenditure report. So we're not pulling in receipts for actuals. We're not asking for backup documentation. We're asking for an attestation of some high-level line items for the reimbursement that the grantee is requesting. Typically, these are for reimbursement payment. Although we do have, for some of our grants, the opportunity to request payment for the month ahead with an estimate of what those are going to be. We use those reports to review trends, look at sudden changes in spending for grantees to help address any issues they may be facing and have conversations. Our turnaround time is approximately five days between receipt of request and payment out the door from receipt by the grant manager through accounting paying through DAS. That is dependent upon the possibility that we might need to request information or that there are missing requirements. Those could impact payment timelines. Timely reporting is a factor. While not every missing report could impact a payment, it often will be a good trigger to remind folks about reporting that's missing. Expenditure reporting is required in order to receive payment. As far as unspent funds, at the end of a budget period, when we have funds remaining, it's generally returned to the funder. Now, we do work to allocate the funding out as much as possible before the end of that period within allowable expenditures and expenditures within the agreement period. So we do tend to discourage the accumulation of goods at the end of a period just to spend funds. But because our agreements are often continuing across biennia, we'll put out a new agreement for the same work with the same organization. We do make, we do try to make reasonable decisions because the money still will be going to the work of the future grant. If an agreement ends early, funds may be reallocated. But that is very dependent upon the timeline and the ability of us to achieve planned services with those funds by reallocation. DELC staff are trained, thank you, Kelly, for sharing about the DAS training because DELC staff are trained not only in the DAS contract administrator training, but they're also trained in funding requirements and allowable expenditures, the agreements, grants and contracts that they are overseeing, statutes and rules that guide those agreements. They work with their program partner to understand the program. And as they delve into their work, I'm bringing on new staff right now, they learn more and more and get deeply, a deep understanding about what the program itself requires to help them suss out whether an expenditure fits the work of the program. And then any documents that are associated with a specific grant or contract, such as a grant manual, any memos, RFAs, RFPs, policy documents. Really, when I'm onboarding new staff, we try to present them with the entire history of the program for which the grant is being put out. So we have a lot of supports and resources for grantees and contractors, and we're always looking for new ways to make that more robust. We always like to start with the agreement and have kickoff meetings to say, hey, we're in a new time. Let's go over the agreement together and let's look at that. Sometimes, those are done in large groups. Preschool Promise has over 200 grantees. So it's very difficult to arrange a one-on-one meeting with each grantee to go over the terms of the agreement. But we do have groups of kickoff meetings where people can ask questions and go through the agreement together. We have grant manuals. We provide trainings for our grantees typically on more of the reporting and fiscal aspects and what they need to do. If there are trainings about the programmatic aspects, those are usually trainings that we offer throughout the year. We record our trainings and include FAQs for our processes. We also provide personal technical assistance. And I have to say, one of the good things that happened because of the remote workplace was we really leaned into Teams and other virtual environments. So what used to be a phone call to a grantee and then nobody can see what each other's doing has become screen sharing and walking through things together and actually being able to visualize processes together. And I think that gives more impactful technical assistance. We've also, with our new awards management system, implemented expansion of our use of interpretive services, both in translation of documents and using interpretive services for trainings and recordings. And we're working to expand that. We also try to have regular meetings with grantees, as I said before, either in groups, if there are large programs, or one-on-one meetings. Any grantee can request an appointment with DELC, either programmatic grant or other staff to go through questions about their grant agreement. Administrative and indirect cost policies. Um, we have an administrative cost policy of 15% for our general fund and ELA grants and contracts. Um, that is on our website and I did include a link in the memo. Um, so that you can look at the details. That is for our state funds. Now, our federal dollars are negotiated at the federal level, of course, but some funding does exclude negotiated indirect and may have a specific indirect rate attached. Um, as an example, I'll go back to relief nurseries. They receive title $20 and those have a 9% indirect attached and that's firm and set and is not related to a negotiated indirect rate. Um, it can also indirect rates can also depend on the level of the recipient and who's taking the full indirect at what level of that funding. All them, for the most part, we do tend to put our our indirect dollars down to the grant, our grantee level. So full cost recovery and other funding information. This for me is is it's a lot to think about and it's given me a lot of room to consider the future. Um, with the variety of agreements and programs at Delk and the way we came together over the last decade or so to become an agency, we have different ways of allocating and determining funding. Um, some of our programs are intended to cover the full cost of a slot like preschool promise or OPK. Um, but they also might require a cost allocation plan. If they're accepting for OPK, they might have federal funding for Head Start and OPK dollars for state. So there's still a cost allocation plan because both both organizations are paying for the same services. Um, we also have agreements that are based on a proposed plan for services and those go through a negotiation process that might raise or lower the amount requested just depending on getting to the details of the submitted proposal. Um, I think one case in point was our initial, um, our initial rollout of the early childhood equity fund grant. Um, that was done very much on a negotiated rate and we've been historically keeping with the rates and inflationary increases as they occur. Um, match funding is sometimes part of an agreement. Um, usually it's to ensure community financial support um, and sustainability. And these are usually set up in in legislation or in rules, um, ahead of the agreements themselves. And these are always things that we are looking at as an agency and talking about the use of match and the um, the potential changes in the future of match. Uh, when we have increases, they're often based on legislative funding. Um, because in most cases, our funding is fully allocated out as much as possible at the beginning of a biennium. So we don't have a lot of room to do increases mid-year or do changes mid-year unless we have additional funding that comes to us from other sources. Um, we do cost modeling to help determine a reasonable reimbursement rate when looking at some of these programs, but we also get input from our partners. Um, we also periodically get specific money. This last session, we got money for workforce supports for some of our grants. And so adding that money to the grants meant that we had to put in that caveat that these are workforce supports. Did we get super specific about what those were? No, because we need to learn what those are going to be as well as allowing grantees to help show us what workforce supports look like in addition to um, salary increases are one thing, but there's a variety of potential works workforce supports out there. Um, we do have the majority, the majority of our, I already said that, agency allocation out the door. So as other funding opportunities come up, sometimes we'll have a grantee, as I said before, might close. If it's early enough, we'll work to reallocate funds. Uh, we'll work to reallocate funds typically within a region so that the region doesn't lose services, but that does take time and we're working on refining that process. Our agreement periods, most of our agreements are currently two-year agreements. Um, we have a continuation process for ongoing programs. So while they may have to reapply, it's a simplified application primarily to indicate that they want to continue that and what the services will look like. We are exploring multi-year agreements. Um, and I think as we all know, a big, a big question about that is how to work with funds across a biennium and be able to keep the funds flowing while the agreement flows. Um, the, and so that's, we do try to add new funds as soon as they're available to our grant agreements um, at the end of the biennium for our continuation agreements. However, we do have processes that have to happen to calculate available funding before we can fund our grantees. And so we're also working on finding ways to streamline that as much as possible. Staff recommendations, our staff, we have an awards management system, phase one of which rolled out in at on July 1 of 2023. Um, because we became a new agency, we had to get a system to help pay claims for grantees and let them submit claims. Um, that is going to grow and we're working on being on a grantee, being able to apply through the system, being able to submit all their reports, including their expenditure reports. So they essentially have as close to possible of a one-stop shop for their grant so that they're not having to fill out documents in three different places, five different places to get all the work done. We anticipate rolling that out at the beginning of fall of 24 with full implementation by the 2527 biennium. Um, and we're, we're optimistic, but also trying to manage our optimism a bit on what we're going to be able to accomplish during this time. However, this system is one that we're always going to be able to grow and improve so that we can make it what we want it to be. And that is what I have. Um, and I put questions, but it sounds like I'll get those in writing later.
Yes, and that is 15 minutes, so well done. Thank you so much. That was really great. Um, so next up we have Department of Human Services.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Kirk Rhodes and for the record, I'm the DPO for ODHS. And bear with me while I pull my slide presentation up. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Well, thank you for the invitation and we're looking very forward to, uh, working with the task force and and other stakeholders in, uh, in moving this forward. And anyway, we took, um, we took the first, um, slide and just kind of laid out the the organizational structure for ODHS. And, uh, we really have five and now six major programs, uh, under the director. And, uh, from these, uh, you know, we'll talk about authority and that kind of thing. But, uh, uh, about 9,500 state employees, uh, are reside within these programs. And most, uh, the most, the newest of of these is Oregon Eligibility Partnership, OEP. Authority is really for, uh, the procurement and expenditure of public dollars, uh, and being stewards of the public trust. Uh, is really kind of broken down into a couple of areas. Uh, so the expenditure authority comes down from the DAS director to the agency director, uh, from the agency director through, uh, the, uh, directors in the state, uh, who in our case delegate to program directors via what we call the MSC 286. And this is really an internal management control to give expenditure authority to to certain levels of the organization and, um, and 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 have a responsible, uh, you know, flow of of decision making on that side. The other side of the coin is an internal management control is, um, the procurement authority. And the procurement authorities comes from the, uh, the DAS directors well, uh, to the agency directors. Uh, and then it's, uh, the agency director can delegate, uh, to a DPO. Uh, if they don't, then they become the procurement officer for that agency. And I would, I've given the associated ORSs, but, uh, there's more information in my memo. Department of Justice. Now we're looking at really the players in the authority business. Uh, the Department of Justice plays a, although grants are generally considered outside of the procurement code, uh, there is a nexus here, uh, where they intersect and that is legal sufficiency review. So, uh, those are the corresponding ORSs and OARs. Uh, a big part of the contract administration, um, or the contract, uh, and grants business in ODHS is the contract administration. After, uh, an agreement, uh, a program requests, uh, to to develop, uh, a grant or a contract or a procedure. It'll be signed and executed and then the contract administrator, of which we have over 500 throughout the agency and the state, uh, will administer that agreement moving forward. Typically where, so, so they're not centrally administered. Typically, what we have is we've got an administrator with an agreement, a grant administrator in the field, uh, that's able to, you know, be, it's, it's, it's really the director's eyes and ears, uh, in in a sense, and is able to to pass information from vendors. Uh, you know, nonprofits, for-profits, MWA, our COVID vendors, uh, pass that information to their leadership. And again, we have several hundred throughout state. Current scope of, uh, ODHS partnerships, uh, we've got just a little over 400 active grants uh, and about 2,500, these are current, these are active agreements, uh, in the state right now. Um, in this current, um, glimpse, and this is, this is the current glimpse only, about 718, uh, million, uh, is has been awarded active grants and about 6.2 billion in all other. And these would include contracts and and, uh, purchase orders and that kind of thing. Um, funds, uh, we get a lot of federal funds. They come from the federal government, state general fund, uh, and other sources such as Casey Foundation and and, uh, other sources that are granting this money. We don't know the distribution of funding types by contract. We currently don't have that in the data systems. Uh, we are able to, um, to pull up the, um, the distribution by business type and and organization. So, um, anyway, uh, current training for our contract administrators uh, is the DAS 11 modules. Uh, we, we, it's a state law. We, we ensure that all of our contract administrators, nearly 500 of them, get the 11 modules from DAS. Um, there's also some training that we've made mandatory to really kind of focus, to help focus uh, the agency's, um, perspective on some of our historically disadvantaged groups. And this is really, um, a, a focus that from leadership down, we've taken and embraced. But requiring this of our contract administrators, the, uh, uh, really an introduction to the COVID office, uh, the statewide policy and the policy is EO 2215. And then there's a, uh, well, that that's an executive order, there's a DAS policy corresponding to that. And then there's also a procedure which is quite helpful. Procurement preferences, uh, we have training, uh, with the, uh, charitable activities section of DOJ. Uh, we have grants, a DOJ public presentation of grants training. And then we've developed our own grants training and we found that, um, there was, there has been historically some confusion regarding processing grants, uh, versus contracts. And it's, it's much different business, uh, and looking at, uh, bringing together that which is those items which are and and requirements that are common denominators. We developed our own training and we presented it to DAS. We developed it alongside a Department of Justice. And it really is just, uh, an internal training that we found to be to be pretty good and in developing this field, uh, and and developing skill in our folks in this field, so. We don't know how many of our contracts are below the 10% minimum. Uh, we don't collect that as a data point. However, of the, uh, the programs and the and several hundred programs that, uh, that do granting and in contracts, uh, those, those items are negotiated at the program level. So the authority to negotiate that is really contingent upon, you know, the, the, uh, if, if it's, you know, if there's an allowance for it in the notes of grant award or the legislative footnote or or any sort of granting instruction that would come along with the the funding. Uh, we would ensure that that was was allowable. And then the and that can be negotiated at program level and that's where it's negotiated. It's not negotiated centrally at all. Payment schedules, we have a really an array of of different, uh, ways that that, uh, payments are made, disbursements. Uh, typically the first glance at that would be if it's not otherwise directed somewhere in a, in, in, in an overriding authority. We would do, uh, reimbursements, monthly, quarterly, annually. Um, you know, there, there are just, there's a lot of different payment types, uh, disbursement types and payment schedules that are seen across the agency, I would say dozens. Uh, and I think that the first, uh, glimpse that our folks really get with regards to this issue of of, uh, fully compensating, uh, our, our vendors for the work that they're doing is at that, you know, uh, first meeting. And, you know, whether it be, uh, you know, a, uh, request, uh, of some sort for information, uh, initial gate engagement with the private, your private sector, uh, whatever. The, the first, we, we start, we really kind of rely a lot on what the vendors believe it's going to take to 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 pay for these services. And there's a lot of components, as we know. Um, but, uh, that's a very important part of is is the feedback we get from those discussions with the community. The Office of Financial Services, uh, they have a, a disbursement timeframe, seven days. That's once the coded receipt, uh, has been received. So once that's received by OFS, they're looking at making payment, uh, in seven days. We, uh, we utilize the attestation, uh, process when deliverables are received. Currently, we have 426 active grants, 2,500 other active contracts. The main service types are domestic violence, family-based services, individual education and family services, outreach agreements and services to senior and disabled individuals. Uh, so these, you know, in a Pareto chart, these are the main services that we are, uh, uh, funding and and supporting and working with our private sector partners to, uh, to advance. Adjustable contract terms, uh, during solicitations, uh, you know, we're, we're looking for a budget. Uh, and that is really, uh, you know, again, that's the first time we we come together to talk about what the full cost recovery is going to be. There is boilerplate language, uh, that exists in our agreements that allows for, uh, escalation uh, of of the expenditures. Now, these have to be, again, based on, um, what we believe to be, you know, the, the, uh, increased costs as seen in, um, and 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 this would be in agreements that are not otherwise, uh, you know, driven by something the legislature would would prescribe and require or programmatically would be, uh, required. Um, so the escalation would be based on, uh, budget increases, uh, actual expenses that, uh, have increased. Uh, and this would be the constraint to guardrail would be what's been appropriate. So the appropriation and, uh, the budgetary limitations are part of that as well in the program's consideration. Payment timelines, they can be adjusted over time. In some cases, cost of living adjustments set by the legislature. This we found was interesting, the active contracts to nonprofits, 1,122 days, which is three years, more than three years. And there has been, and we've heard from organizations and our partners that, you know, bridging the end of the fiscal years or fiscal term has been for our state or by has been a challenge and it has. And in some cases, with, with federal dollars, you know, we're, we're looking at, you know, the, what we're up against as states, we're up against the Anti-Deficiency Act. So that is using or, or expending dollars that have not been appropriated yet to federal level. So that, that's what we're up against on the federal side. On the state side, it's, it's a little more driven by the, the direct dollars. So we have very few fully general fund grants, very few. Most of them are admixed or are, are straight federal. So anyway, those, those things with regards to bridging the gap, we know that that's a real concern for some of our vendors, especially our smaller vendors and mom and pop vendors who, who are looking to, you know, make and continue with payment. DOJ has worked with some language in nonappropriation language, that kind of thing. But we're, we're really continuing to look at this. And I think some organizations such as Nonprofit Association of Oregon has made some pretty good recommendations with regards to, you know, their short-term loans available and that kind of, or making those available. I don't know that they aren't today, but anyway, so we know that that is an issue. Recommendations and things that are working well, which was part of the, the query. We know that there is a dearth, a general dearth in some of the smaller organizations of internal kind of business infrastructure. And so, you know, the reporting side of things is, is, is sometimes a real challenge. We, we know that. So we're looking at ways, we're constantly looking at ways to advance that. One, one of the things that came out of, out of the DAS procedure, out of Executive Order 2215, was the outreach side. And we've been doing outreach for quite a while, but understanding the nature and, and the composition of, of the folks that we're working with in the nonprofit, for-profit community are stakeholders. We have to understand, you know, the training gap. And getting them plugged into organizations like GCAP, small business development centers, there's some, there's some organizations that offer some pretty good free stuff, QuickBooks, training, you know, that's free, how to develop proposals, or some other things that, that, many of the things that I think we need to look at. Second thing we noted is that there's, there's probably a need for centralized grants training to develop a baseline across the state. And we attached our training to, to, with this memo just as for consideration if that is the way the task force and ultimately legislature seek to go. But I think it would be very helpful and probably it would probably reduce and mitigate some of the confusion around granting. And, you know, confusion equates to long cycle times and, and so on. The Department of Justice Charitable Activities Section CAS gives presentations on requirements of nonprofits in doing business in the state. So there is, there's a requirement for nonprofits to be registered with the Secretary of State and with CAS. And so I think some of the areas that could potentially go sideways from the state's perspective are illuminated during that, that vetting in, in the pre, pre-award period. So they've been very good partners and, and have given presentations recently to, to, to in a couple of our area, our leadership and, and, and the procurement office. We've also, this, we found this to be very helpful. And this is one of the things that we're very excited about. We developed what we call Procurement Council. And the Procurement Council is where folks who are in our organization, who have a foot in contracting or granting and another foot with vendors. So they're in that space, right? They're hearing what vendors are, are talking about, what they're concerned about. We, we have stood this up and we've had, Philip has come in and spoken to this group. We've had other organizations and, and representatives from the private sector. We're, we're looking very forward to hearing that, that direct feedback on how we're doing and what we can do better. And it's along the lines of what we're doing here with this task force, but this is something we developed oh, about a year ago, year and a half ago. So the recommendation would be this is working for us. We're hearing the recommendations and we can implement those that we can, you know, change inside the organization. We also-
I just wanted to give you a time check. We are 15 minutes on this one. So if you want to start wrapping up.
Okay, thank you. We've developed what we call a Contract Administration and Procurement Community of Practice, right? So we've got these, these more than 400 contract administrators in the field. And one of the, one of the challenges in the large organization that we're, we're in is getting information to those contract administrators, again, who are the eyes and the ears for the director who are out there, you know, at community events, who are, who are, who are throughout the state and in, in the field. Best practices, we talk about what's working, what we're hearing in the, in the Procurement Council, what we're hearing, you know, from other sources. And this is, this has been very successful too, and it's, it's becoming very well attended. I would say this in, in closing, more than a year ago, we, in, in the rollout of Executive Order 2215, we took, we took this seriously and we used the procedure that DAS developed to, to, to develop a, an action plan. And what this has done for us is this has given a, a tangible, this has given us a tangible way to focus on things that we can do, action items that we can do in the procurement side of things to make it procurement more user-friendly for our small vendors and our historically disadvantaged vendors. We're very excited about this. And Mercedes, I, I've probably continued to, to blow my time there, but that's, do I have any questions or, or, or maybe I'll get the questions in the, the email coming later, but thank you so much for this opportunity and we just thank you again and, and if anything that you need, let me know.
Thank you so much. And yes, it looks like we did have a couple of follow-up questions that you will get for some response in writing and thank you so much for that presentation.
Most welcome.
Next up, we have Oregon Health Authority.
Hi, everyone. Good morning. This is Melissa Hanks from the Oregon Health Authority. I use she/her pronouns. I'm not on camera today because I'm having some bandwidth issues. But I'm really happy to be here with Steve Phillips presenting and Steve, please go ahead and introduce yourself.
Good morning, Steve Phillips. I have the same issue as Melissa with video, so I apologize about that. I manage procurement for the Oregon Health Authority under the shared service model of the Oregon Department of Human Services Shared Service. And that is a mouthful. Thank you for having us. I'm looking forward to it.
All right. So as we get into our presentation today, I just want to be really clear about the focus of how we did this presentation. We, of course, during COVID have been working with just so many different grantees and contractors. And so we have a group that focuses on community-based organizations and nonprofits. And so a lot of this presentation you'll see really speaks to the work that we've been doing with that group. So you'll see CBO use quite a bit in this presentation. Just really quickly, OHA recognizes the need to do better when it comes to grants and procurements with our community-based organizations. That work is a really critical part of our agency's strategic goal of eliminating health inequities by 2030. Our organizations are constantly providing us feedback to improve processes. And OHA is committed to responding to that feedback by adjusting our processes and improving our relationships as well. Steve, please go ahead.
Thank you. Okay. So expanding a little bit on what Kirk was saying with ODHS, because some of that does overlap in terms of process, we use similar in the OHA side. For the agency decision-making and authority, the program staff will determine when a need is necessary. So for example, we, there's a grant award of some type needed. They'll identify the budget and other necessary information, including scope development. And then through our office, they will send those documents over through a mailbox request box that we have available to them. From there, OCNP or OHA contract staff will assign it to themselves and then collaborate with the program in the development of that award, in particular with grants. Sometimes those also occur through solicitations, but I'll talk about that more in just a bit. And then OCNP through that grant consultant will navigate the execution, the development execution process as well as posting those agreements to Oregon buys. Those are by the way, open to public scrutiny in terms of what's open to the public and the agreements include that and then confidential is not open. Go ahead and change the slide, please. Okay, we have done several of the CBO processes recently in collaboration with the program. I'm going to define what this chart looks like a little bit. But from the OCNP perspective, those first three boxes really are related to the work OCP does in collaboration with our program customer. I'm going to give you a little bit of information. Solicitations come in two types for grant awards. RFGP, which we call Request for Grant Proposal and an RFGA where that we call that a Request for a Grant Application. Typically those two processes take around 90 to 120 days through the award and negotiations phase, which OCNP helps facilitate as well. That includes all that internal acceptance of proposals and evaluations of proposals, review of applications and so on. And then navigates for program, the contract execution piece with the vendor. And then the fund, fund dispersment really is an action that should be or could be over on the next slide. That's really post-execution, that middle arrow there. And from there, the program will administer those contracts through closeout and processes and so on. Next slide, please. Melissa, you're up.
So I, I took a look at our data for OHA, looking at all of the open agreements that we have that expire on July 1st, 2023 or later. So we're in the 2325 biennium. You can see that we have just shy of 5,000 total grants and contracts totaling about $6.1 billion. 838 grants totaling about $610,000 and other contracts, agreements and purchase orders at 4,148 at 5.5 billion. When we look at just the nonprofit contract types or agreement types, I'm sorry. We're looking at the total of nonprofits involved, 1,038. Nonprofits are 589 in grants and 449 nonprofits with contracts agreements or purchase orders. Steve, please go ahead.
Sure. Okay. So those grant agreements that Melissa just spoke to used to support the following. And this is not necessarily inclusive or all-inclusive. Health equity, trainings, A and D service, mental health, medical and mental health service, outreach, emergency preparedness and housing assistance. So you can see that these touch many areas of the Oregon Health Authority. And then the note at the bottom of the bullet, contracts used to procure very specific services and goods could include computer investments, transportation, transportation, sorry about that, office and, and equipment, education. I, I, the note I would make here is that there is now, you can see a difference between grant agreements and contracts. Grants are really defined in rule by the support or stimulation of a program or a project. Whereas contracts are usually, not usually, tip are used for the purchase of services and supplies is how it's defined in the rule. Next slide, please.
Excellent. This is Melissa. So I'll take this one. The training that we provide for nonprofit contract management. We have been doing really excellent work, especially in our public health department with Dolly England, training folks to work with nonprofits. Our agency contract administrators receive that DAS contract administrative training. We have analysts in OCNP who assist us with the management and oversight guidance. Really we have program staff reviewing all of the requirements of the grant with the grantees. They hold regular meetings with the grantees, both as groups to provide information and in one-on-one meetings to help review performance and provide technical assistance. We've had a lot of success with office hours so grantees can ask questions and get information about expectations and deadlines. We also post our policies and procedures related to grants on the website. We have them in general. We also have them that are program-specific. And our Equity and Inclusion Division documents best practices to consider for equitable procurement processes. And they make this information available on the website for staff to use. As far as our admin and indirect rate policies, in the brief look that I did with our different programs, our OHA grantees receive at least a 10% indirect rate. They can request a higher rate and OHA will work with the organization to meet those needs. I'll note that the Oregon tribes can request higher rates than nonprofit grantees to honor the need for equitable supports. We expect at our agency for organizations to bill their grant for all of the time they use working on the grant, including activity, expense and expense reporting. Compliance does not affect the allocation of funds or their indirect rate. And the compliance requirements do vary based on funding source. Largely we're concerned with federal grants over a certain amount that would require a federal audit. We don't necessarily know if that's going to happen ahead of time, but we do assist with the audit when we're notified and it takes place. And Steve, will you please talk about payment structures?
I will, I will. Thank you. Payment structures, as with several other agencies, generally OHA uses the reimbursement model as the predominant model of, of use. I'm going to skip that second bullet for just a second. OHA will work with organizations to find the model that works best for them. So back to that solicitation process we used for the CBOs, that kind of discussion was occurring during those negotiations. And the last bullet, program staff work with grantees early in, in the process to ensure upfront costs are being supported. We recognize that is a possible issue as well, especially for smaller CBOs. And then I'm going to jump back up to the second bullet here. We also require anytime in a direct award or through an award from a solicitation and an RFGA or the RFGP I spoke to earlier, that nonprofits and businesses are registered with the Secretary of State. That is a requirement contractually. And we also will work with vendors who want to utilize a fiscal sponsor. In that case, a fiscal sponsor must also be registered as well. And we've done a number of those through the, the award process through a solicitation as well. Next slide. Furthering the payment structure conversation. Sorry, I didn't move mine following. I should just be looking at the computer here. Sorry about that. The first bullet is identifying contracts that are awarded as a result of a price agreement negotiated for statewide use by DAS. DOJ is involved with that in terms of review. Those standard methodologies and processes are defined therein. We have very little ability to negotiate those at the agency level. That would require discussions with DAS. However, for grants payments, they can be flexible to meet the organization or the vendors' needs and the OHA need as well. And we, we encourage those discussions to occur because as other folks have said, And we encourage those discussions to occur because as other folks have said, the federal funding notices can typically identify what those are going to be, but often they don't. And when they don't, there could be flexibility there. Organizations, when organizations report that they need to have any steady revenue stream, that would also be a time to have a discussion as well. This could include dispersments such as prepaid weekly, monthly, releasing 75% of the grand funds upfront and reserving 25 for the expiration of the agreement and many others. And I think Kirk mentioned a dozen, and he's probably, he's probably right. Next slide, please. Okay, so contract terms when there's a need for adjusting. These opportunities are provided to all programs or vendors, I'm sorry. In, in the environment of a solicitation, we will define often what those terms are that can be negotiated. Right? Offering that opportunity to all vendors or applicants, depending on the type of solicitation, the opportunity to evaluate what their needs are and be able to directly award with us should they receive an award those provisions. And there's with grants, there's additionally, I would say, more flexibility to do that through an application process as well than may be actually listed. Typically, that's not the case in the contract world though, but this is grants. Grants are adjusted. I know that says contracts, but I'm sticking with grants here. I apologize. Grants are adjusted or modified through an amendment process with OCNP that is absolutely similar to the process I mentioned earlier with collaborating with OCNP. And those can be done over the life of the agreement and based on the scope of the solicitation or the awarded agreement, should it have been directly awarded. Larger, more established organizations, we have found have the tools and resources necessary and don't, and only require minimal technical assistance from the agency. However, the smaller, and we found this to be true with the several CBO processes we've, we've done already, smaller cultural-specific grassroots orgs need additional support. And the program is working that quite regularly with those areas to do just that. And can be one-on-one as well as what was referenced over teams. I know those meetings are occurring and when necessary, OCNP has been involved as well. Next slide, please. Okay, so when contract evaluation is used to allow for full cost recovery, OHA is asking the organization to submit an updated work plan and budget based on the new award. OHA has reserved the right to recover, and this has been covered already. And I would just add or emphasize in our templates we use here for both ODHS and OHA, there is boilerplate that discusses recovery rights. And then if additional language is needed, we would do so on an as-needed or grant-specific situation. And that could be based on the payment methodologies utilized in that specific grant as well. When is a contract considered for extension or cost? Grants and contracts too are limited to the NTFunds available and specific to a biennium. I will add, here's another good place to say, however, our boilerplate does include funding appropriations language to be able to do that in most funding situations. And then another note related to the outside master agreements I spoke to, price agreements through DAS. The contractors can request a rate increase through DAS, but approval is really related to the availability and resources of the agency. And further, OHA is currently exploring how to integrate and build inflation into the future grants as has been at least alluded to in previous presentations. Next slide, please. Mercedes, how are we doing on time?
I was just about to interrupt you, so we have hit 15 minutes, so you can have a minute to wrap up.
Very good. Thank you. Multi-year contracts, I'll just go ahead with this. I think most contracts that we execute are for multi-years. Generally, what OHA found through the data were varied from one year to 10 years. We do have the ability now, it used to not be this way, but we do have the ability now to have contracts longer than five years. That includes grants. Typically, you'll see the Public Health Department do two-year grants when related to the regional health equity coalitions. But they are, I'm sorry, yeah, that's correct, but they are considering moving to two-year agreements. Contracts that utilize the master price agreement are typically in place for a five-to-two-year, 10-year timeframe. And moving on here, our contracts that, similar to what Kirk was saying for ODHS, we have found were almost four years, correct? Nonprofits for an average, in terms of days, almost six years. And for-profit, about three and a half, three and a half years. And then bridging the gap between the biennia, reserving portion of the dispersment for the last month of the agreement. We're looking at ways to do that so that we don't have that gap between June 30 and July 1. I think someone referenced, there's a comment reference to that. Creating that bridge period and then maintaining ongoing communication with grantees as well. Next slide. Melissa, I think you, this is yours.
Excellent. Thank you, Steve. So as far as recommendations, our Equity and Inclusion Division that has our Regional Health Equity Coalitions, they have an excellent memo about equitable procurement processes with priority populations. And you can see here what priority populations means. Basically, this compiles all of the awesome information that we've gotten when working with our community-based organizations and put them into a document that we can refer back to as we're improving our processes and moving forward with new initiatives. And we, as I mentioned before, have a CBO work group working on contracting improvements, including providing feedback to people who don't get funded after the award period, holding lots of Q and A sessions, templates, templates all over the place. Our CBOs love templates. And simplifying the application procedure in the timeline and sending resource documents out, including Oregon buys instructions and information. And that's it for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very well done. So before I call on the next department, I want to clarify for task force members in the group that we did have some departments who did not submit a memo or a presentation and will not be presenting today, although they appear on the agenda. The Higher Education Coordinating Commission did not submit a memo or PowerPoint. The Department of Emergency Management did not submit a memo or a PowerPoint. And Oregon Housing and Community Services did submit a PowerPoint, so we can review that. But they did, they will not be attending to present. So that means that we're going to skip in our agenda down to the Oregon Department of Education. And then we'll skip to the Oregon Youth Authority and then we will take our break. Yes, Amy, so before OD starts, Amy.
Thank you, Mercedes. I just wanted to let you know that the Department of Emergency Management submitted something very late this morning. So they do have a presentation Melissa is here to present, so we can add them back into the mix. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. All right, OD, take it away.
Perfect. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. For the record, my name is Kai Turner. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of the Office of Finance and Information Technology here at the Oregon Department of Education. Thank you for having me. I also have on the line controlling the slide deck Ian Hornbaker. He is my Senior Operations and Policy Advisor within OFIT, as we are commonly referred to. Next slide. So I just wanted to provide these first four slides as grounding for what we do at ODE. Certainly, I want to just share that we consistently try to work in partnership with our school district, ESD, and community partners to foster equity and excellence for every learner. Next slide, Ian. This is some data from 2223 around the populations that we serve within the state, including 197 school districts, 19 ESDs, and 553,000 students with more than 300 languages spoken. Next slide, Ian. I'm not going to go through this slide, but certainly wanted to offer it up to everyone with our demographic breakdowns and how we are increasing diversity and how diversity is changing within Oregon over time. Certainly, if you have the opportunity, go through this slide and it offers a lot about the system in which we live here in Oregon with regard to education. Next slide, Ian. And just to share, the Equity Strategic Plan in ODE is our strategic plan. And we try to infuse equity in everything we do, especially for marginalized and oppressed communities. Next slide, Ian. Now to the meat and potatoes of the conversation, this is a really big org structure, but I thought it important to share that we are made up of several different offices, each having their own individual programs and grants that they oversee. I am over the Office of Finance and Information Technology. That is the back of the office function. So largely procurement and fiscal grants is the teams that many of our school districts, ESDs and CBO partners work with when it comes to payment of our grants and issuance of contracts. From a day-to-day operational standpoint, the decision-making behind grants and contracts resides with each individual program. The authority to bind the agency exists with procurement and myself to execute and sign those contracts as they come in. But this is that high-level graphic. We also, I want to share, have two semi-autonomous entities within our budget structure that is the Educator Advancement Council as well as Youth Development Oregon. You will find that our, our structures for which we approach paying and working with our CBO partners are very similar to Delk because Delk's recently just became its own department out of the Oregon Department of Education. So they were that third semi-autonomous organization up until July 1 within our structures. Next slide, Ian. So similar to our partners or our colleagues that went before us, there is no real distinction in our electronic grant management system of contract type. And I won't get into that. I think my colleague shared where they are with that. Simply because of how we code things in our state financial system, it is hard for us to break that out in any meaningful way. This is something that is possible with our replacement of our grant management system, of which we are negotiating the contract currently. However, at this time, it would be an extensive administrative task to break that out. Service-type determinations are done by procurement in concert with DOJ. We do follow the two CFR around determination of what type of contract this should be. By and large, all of our awards are reimbursement-based, similar to my colleagues before us. If funds not fully expended are liquidated and returned to the grant program to be used for another overall grant approved purpose or returned to the original awarding agency, ODE. From my standpoint, I just want to share the immense amount of contracts that we have. We do about 10,000 contracts in a biennia. And our total grant and aid funding in ODE is around $4.9 billion and $10.2 billion in the state school fund. And just to share that the partners that we typically work with in our primary book of business is allocation-based and competitive grants with districts and ESDs. CBOs represent a smaller subset of our competitive RFAs. So about $15 billion goes out from the Department of Education and infuses into the education ecosystem here in Oregon. Next slide, Ian. So I won't spend a ton of time on this. I think every other agency has touched this. We do the DAS mandated contract administrator training with every grant manager. We also have a grant manager training for, that is ODE-specific. We also offer technical assistance and office hours to any partners looking for additional help through the RFA process. And we have a new ODE grantee FAQ that is posted on our website. And this typically shares how to work in a step-by-step fashion with our EGAM system or our electronic grant management system. Next slide, Ian. I will hone in on indirect and admin for CBOs. Typically, this is dictated by the funding stream itself, but can go up to 15%. Our LEAs and ESDs have their own negotiated rate with the federal partners. So as I stated earlier, we have multiple funding streams, be that the SEIA, the SSA or the SIA, as well as GF-based dollars. We do not typically have federal dollars that are allocated to CBO partners. All of our CBO-based funding by way of RFAs comes from either other fund, being that SEIA or from general fund dollars. So they have a different potential indirect rate as compared to maybe the federal restrictions that our title programs might see to districts. Next slide, Ian. So distributions are determined by the program and are taken into account when we look at our OARS as well as any statute. Some of our funding is dictated in statute around how we can distribute the funds and when. And then some is taken into account by any Oregon administrative rules that were created for that particular grant program. Program timelines differ between each grant. We are currently going through a process called the Integrated Guidance with our district and ESD partners, where we are trying to align all of our grants to a similar cycle. We have heard from our district and ESD partners that they have some administrative burden behind the amount of grants that we send to them. So aligning those in meaningful ways and making it easier for them is important to us and something that the legislature has asked for us to do. So I just share this to say that the struggle is real with both CBOs and our district partners and ESD partners as well when it comes to the administrative burden. It's felt by all. And you can go to the next slide, Ian. Any attestation is defined largely within the agreement. There are several different ways in which we do the claims process for our child nutrition programs. That's by way of CMP web. For everything else, it is the electronic grant management system and then invoices hit the contract as it is encumbered through our accounting systems. Grant managers adjust the timeline around the contract itself independently within their own unit. We do multi-year contracts for nonprofits and for-profit vendors. And this also varies by program and timing of the funding. We do have contracts that go outside of the biennia just to keep continuity. And we have the language around appropriation of funds in instances where we have to reduce the funding amount to any potential grantees. Next slide, Ian. This is, this is a harder one for me to have a conversation about and share. I understand that very small entities don't have capacity when it comes to payments. I hear that and understand that. And we can adjust contract terms on a case-by-case basis. How are certain things within our contracts are non-negotiable and dictated to us by DOJ or DAS? That being insurance and/or any indemnification clauses relative to those contracts. Cost evaluation is used to allow for full cost recovery by occasionally awarding less than the required amount due to funding limits and using amendments to add funds if costs go higher than anticipated. Relative to the conversation around inflation, that isn't taken into account in our agreements. Because our, we, because our agreements with nonprofits and CBOs are market-driven and on a on an RFA competitive basis. But we do allow to add funds if necessary by way of amendment to any of those particular grants. Next slide, Ian. As for staff recommendations, we always try to be a great partner, a good partner, and we always have our listening ears open. So I think that what my staff has brought to me is establishing So I think that what my staff has brought to me is establishing clear and realistic timelines upfront and expectations of grantees is a part of that bilateral conversation when we go into negotiations of these contracts and grants. Establishing those clear, realistic timelines, what does that mean? Timelines of when to expect funding in their bank accounts, so clear communication around turnaround of money. A clear extension process to allow grantees who have not met that deadline. Also enforcing those deadlines. And then support from grant managers to understand that while grant funds are important, timely claims, cutoff dates and deadlines need to be also taken seriously. And then not causing undue stress or burden for internal staff or, you know, for your staff on the CBO side. One other thing that I'd like to share for this particular slide, I was formerly the procurement director for the department. And as a part of a legislative ask, we created a new position that is our procurement training and outreach coordinator. That particular person is now on board and getting their legs up under them, understanding the systems. And the purpose of that was to have someone that can both be a listening ear and a liaison with our CBO partners and help them through the process of an RFA and go and meet our partners where they exist and where they are to train them up to navigate these systems as well as train out and share back any items that they might find to be burdensome. So that we can take our process improvement and continuous improvement efforts to create efficiencies in those particular spaces. Next slide, Ian. As always, thank you. I think I went through that quicker than most. However, happy to receive any questions. And I also attached my executive assistant's email just in case anyone needs to schedule time or has follow-up questions for me directly. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so I think Amy, it's the Department of Emergency Management that is here?
Correct.
Okay, so they can go ahead and go next.
Good morning, all. Michelle Lovejoy. I'm with the Oregon Department of Emergency Management and with me is Elena Mayfield. So I'm going to go through this really quick since a lot of agencies have shared very similar things at this point. So just really quick, we were just created as a department very similar to DELC. We were created actually first and effective July 1 of 2022, we separated from the Oregon Military Department. We are the SAA for most of the federal emergency management or FEMA grants. And I just wanted to say that we were in that capacity prior to becoming our own department. And we've talked a lot about indirect rate. And I will just say, just from the point of view from this agency, so our indirect rate has been negotiated. We have a rate. When we were with OMD, it was 13%. Now that we're our own agency, it's 42.4%. I, I will say the challenge that we have on our end with the de minimis specifically is that it is our responsibility to say whether or not an agency can accept a de minimis rate if they've never had a negotiated rate. We as agencies don't have a way of knowing whether an entity has ever had a rate. So I'm just putting that out there. It's not part of my slide, but I wanted you to know that's the burden of proof that we have on our end that is very difficult to prove when it comes to de minimis. So just saying that now, I could add more to the memo when I, when you guys get that. Our organization's structure right now, just a simpler, simplistic form. The three entities you see on top, the Director, the Deputy and the Chief Financial Officer. We all have no limit signature authority for the agency. Section managers have individual authority for their programs. But anybody who manages a contract over 150,000 right now, we have the same contract training requirements that all the other agencies have mentioned to this point. Just so you know, our agency is predominantly federally and other funded. We don't have a lot of general fund. And so you'll see where we interact with nonprofits. And just to give you a picture of where our limit is, is predominantly in our federal fund dependency. And the grants that we administer are passed through federal fund grants. So the one grant that we have that is specific for nonprofits is a nonprofit security grant program. So this supports the Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency's focus on enhancing the ability of state, local, tribal, territorial governments as well as nonprofits. And it is a comprehensive set of measures authorized by Congress, implemented by DHS. And it's to help strengthen the nation's communities against potential terrorists or other extreme attacks. So eligible nonprofits are those that are listed here. We have two different forms, one for organizations that are located within the UWASI, the Urban Area Security Initiative. And the other are for entities located outside of that. So it is a very specific grant. There are opportunities for physical and cybersecurity enhancements. And as the SAA, we do review and rank applications and provide recommendations to FEMA for approval. But the final award decisions are made by FEMA and announced in the state's award. In FY '23, the allowable costs were really focused on those security-related activities for personnel, planning exercises, training, acquisition and installation of security equipment, real property. But that was very specific for the '23 round. Each round of funding will have different parameters for the funding. But this is just the example of the latest round. This gives you just a really quick snapshot of the number of nonprofits that we've had. And just know that these particular grants have three-year periods of performance. And any funds that are not expended, we have to return to FEMA. We can't use them for any other purpose. So in fiscal year 19, we had to de-obligate 102,000-ish. And you'll see, we are still within periods of performance for FY '20, '21, '22, '23. We are in the process of closing FY '20 and we'll know how much will be de-obligated at that point. But this gives you a snapshot of the number of nonprofits and how much has been awarded. And just so you know, when it comes to contracting, we do have to follow the federal code as well as any state-of-organ procurement or accounting manual rules, policies, procedures, everything. And that's it. Just thought I'd make it quick and sweet. Like I said, we are not in the position of giving out grants with any of our general fund dollars. Those are very specific to certain programs. And most of the things that we do are based on federal requirements. So the agency itself does not have a lot of flexibility when it comes to contract terms, conditions. So it, you know, while we do work with nonprofits, it's in one very specific way.
Thank you very much. So that's going to bring us to our last department presentation. Oregon Youth Authority. And then we will take a break. We'll come back and have a little bit of a debrief and look at our questions for February. So OIA, please take it away.
Thank you very much. Is everyone seeing the slide that I have? Perfect. Well, hello, everyone. I'm just going to start us off here with my introduction. So I am Caitlin Hudson. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for the Oregon Youth Authority. And I'll throw in some confetti. I know I'm the last in a long line of presentations, so hope everyone's awake now for, for what I have to tell you. So I wanted to go over real quickly our decision-making authority here at OIA. So we really try to make a point and divide contracts versus grants because we want them to have different processes. And the idea for our grants is that we streamline the process to be able to address the urgent needs of our providers and nonprofits and not tying things down within a decision-making structure that is part of the state procurement process. We recently got our grant authority in 2022. And so we're still building on this process and trying to make sense of our authority and what we can establish while also applying an equity lens because that's something OIA strives to do in everything that we take on. So as you see, our grants, they're submitted, the application is submitted. The applications go straight to the grant committee, who is the decision-maker on whether the grant is going to be moving forward. And it gets a final approval by the agency director with a recommendation from the grant committee. And then it's submitted for payment. That versus our structure that kind of follows the state procurement process where you'll have a contract that starts in program, moves through program leadership, goes through a procurement team, gets reviewed by the DPO. Sometimes it goes through the CFO, the agency assistant director and the agency director, depending on the complexity type of contract, et cetera. And in that, the contract will then revisit that process. Once the contract is executed, folks will have to go through a similar process when they submit an invoice for payment. It will go through program for approval. It'll go through procurement and budget. So they don't visit this process once. They visit it twice on the contracting side. So that's kind of why we really wanted to make sure we are isolating grants from contracts and had them structured differently. So this is an overview of our scope of partnerships. So over the last two years, we have about 2,366 active contracts. We've completed 32 grants since our given authority in 2022 through House Bill 4004. The number of contracts we currently have in review are 104. And the number of contracts or grants we currently have in review is 12. As of this biennium, we've issued 47,000 in general fund. And we're scheduled to issue about 241 million in general fund for contracts. Still early in the biennium, so most of our contracts and grants will all be general fund. We are almost all general fund in our agency. Rarely do we do things outside of that. I wanted to talk a little bit more about the specific services that our grants offer. So OIA has a very specific granting authority. Our grants are only available for local governments, nonprofits and individuals seeking to meet the treatment and care needs of OIA adjudicated youth. Because of that specificity, OIA is only able to issue grants to folks that will be serving our youth. So they are going to have to be in a pending contract process or have an existing contract with OIA for youth services. And this would, these grants are meant to provide support for startup costs and capacity building for new treatment and service delivery programs, provide culturally responsive and trauma-informed programs and efforts for youth. And then cover emergency health and safety needs for our providers and contractors. So a good example of this would be, you know, we had one of our BRS providers fire suppression system go out and they needed an emergency grant to get it fixed. And they submitted it to us and we were able to do a grant for that. So those are the types of services that our grants typically cover. Contracts, on the other hand, available to all organizations that are looking to do business with the state and will follow those state procurement processes applicable. We typically use those for budgeted and non-budgeted agency operational expenses. And I see those more of long-term, ongoing youth services. Our grants tend to be a little bit more short-term in nature and cover, you know, three months to a year of services. I wanted to show something that we've set up in the agency in the last couple of months. We're really trying to track how we do work. And we started this process of a data dashboard with the grant process because it was one of our smaller processes that we could potentially scale out to contracting in general. So at any time, we can look and see where we're at in terms of our grant workflow, what type of applicant we have. So you'll see we have county, individuals, nonprofits, residential. So we really want to get to the meat of who we're serving and what type of organizations are being funded. And then we're creating visualizations around that as well. And so I think this is working out really well for us in tracking our data. And I'm hopeful that we'll be able to expand this to contracting. When I did this exercise, I realized that we don't have a lot of data that's easily accessible around contracting. So this was a good time for me to say, hey, why don't we move this data dashboard for contracting as well? For grants, we typically have an average turnaround time from application to payment of one month. We, the categories that we support require us to have an urgency around issuing payment. For regular contracts, we can see one month to up to a year, 18 months. It really just depends on the complexity and the amount of review that's required in the state contracting process. I, I think a lot of the year-to-18-month contracts happen to be contracts that are with other government entities that require a lot of legal review on both sides. Most of our nonprofit contracts will take about one to six months for a turnaround time. We try to expedite those because we do understand a lot of our providers are working in a situation where they don't have three months' operating expenses saved up. And any kind of delay really impacts them operationally. We do have a process in place for expediting processing the best we can for urgent situations because we do have a lot of health and safety issues that come up in our grant issuing process. So we have a couple of different type of payment models for grants. One of those is reimbursements. The other is upfront payment and we have tranche release. And the way that we do this is that the grant committee reviews every application and determines what payment method is most appropriate for the service category situation, their assessment of the program and then the financial risk assessment. So we really try to work with our folks on building a payment model that makes sense. And we have people on the grant committee that are within the program that know the programs really well and they know the situation of the applicants in a better way than just deciding that at a financial level. So we really try to keep our grant committee diversified and making sure that different perspectives are part of that decision-making. Funds that aren't expended within the timeframe of the grant agreement or expenditures outside of those listed in the grant agreement are recouped by the agency. Our agency has been really good about offering extensions or amendments to grant agreements through the grant committee. If folks need more time or they realize that they need a different type of expenditure, we'll work with them on making those amendments. We follow on the contracting side. We do follow a lot of the standards and practices that a lot of my other agencies here have articulated. So I won't go in the contracting side of that. But I will say on the data and accountability side, we've built a lot of dashboards and workflow tracking and process tracking for both grant management and contract administration. That allows us a pretty high level of accountability. We're able to expedite urgencies. We have set a lot of service level expectations across our procurement, contract administration and financial services areas to be sure that things aren't being clogged. I always tell people, don't clog the artery. The heart needs to function. Let's get things moving. We have a good level of partnerships between finance and program right now to where we communicate and figure out where things are going wrong. We have service level expectations around response to inquiries. So if contractors or grantees reach out to us, it is an expectation that we get back to them, you know, within two to three days and that we're not having things sit in our inboxes for weeks while people are waiting for the response. I think my team averages 24 hours. They really take our support of nonprofit entity seriously. And then if things do happen, we definitely talk about it. We have a high level of accountability in our financial services team at this moment in time. And we process through why delays were there and we go indirectly and fix the issue within our processes. Training, we offer similar training as other agencies have described. We do all the contract administrator trading with our contract administrators. We do do that service expectations training either through individual programs or through financial services. Financial services will provide templates and training on expense tracking and what type of things folks need to submit. Best practices for establishing this process, especially for grantees. A lot of our grantees are startups. So they're kind of needing some guidance on how to develop some foundational tools for tracking grants and then reporting. Our grant administration best practices are provided by the grant committee. And we're trying to think of ways where we can standardize that a little bit better. We have highly-trained procurement specialists. They're not only trained in contract administration, but also in the principles of procurement, which is also provided by DAS. Same type of thing. They have service level expectations. They're great partners with DOJ on interpreting our authority and our risk management. They're highly trained on that end and they work well with DOJ as we're trying to work in partnership with them, moving a lot of these things that get delayed through. Our grantees receive those templates and tracking tools. And our contract administrator and our procurement specialist really do try to partner with them as much as possible if they're needing assistance. And saying that, usually we rely on them to tell us they need assistance and that might be something we think about and that. We rely on them to tell us they need assistance and that might be something we think about in that. How do we not require people ask for help and just give them the resources freely? Admin and indirect policy. So our agency doesn't currently have any policies around that because we're general funded. So our policies are specifically related to what we can do under our authority. And for that, it's in the services to youth. Those funds have to be in those allowable categories. We have seen a lot of the things that you would find under admin indirect as part of those asks. Because having people and staffing is part of startup and having people and staffing. Specifically responsible for culturally responsive care or new treatment or sermons delivery. That's a bucket where they can put some administrative costs in there. And for me, I feel like that's a. A good way to have it truly be the cost of doing business because you can add those full position and costs. Programmatic costs. OIA is still developing a lot of formal policies and procedures around how we treat. Organizations of different sizes. Right now, we're trying to build out an equity-based process emphasizing integrating DEI into those business processes. I'm excited for that formalization, but we don't have anything to share right now. We have a practice of always encouraging our contractors and grantees. To ask us questions and to reach out if there's a need for extension amendment or cost increases because our. Grant committee and procurement team want to work with those folks on making it right. On making some kind of adjustment, having a conversation, negotiation. Even contracts that we've had in. In a longer term, we were able to come in and kind of talk about how service levels have changed and potentially make amendments to that. So we're wanting to work with our folks. We do, our contracts vary in complexity and are calculated really based on specific services. BRS rates for different levels of care. For example, BRS rates, they're across the board. Each rate is calculated differently. And we always want to work with our providers and consider inflation. Rate studies and other provider communicated increase during our budget development and/or our contracting processes. We really do try to get feedback. Making sure that we're covering their operational needs and we're in, at least in the know if there's a rate study needed, etcetera. We do provide continuous support and proactive communication to our multi-year contracts and agreements. Financial services is instructed to prioritize these contracts and agreements during the biennium gaps. To mitigate those disruption in services and payments. Essentially, they have like a standing order that most of the work should be done upfront. Towards those final months of the biennium to where when we cross over bienniums, all we have to do is kind of push the button. They do a lot of upfront work to, to limit the amount of lag time that our folks will experience in payments. And I really have to credit our procurement team for making that a priority and they do it really, really well. We're very proud of them for doing that. So some areas of improvement that we've identified is that we, we do. Want to see better training of grantees. And employees working with nonprofits. I think there's a little bit of a gap in. Knowledge about how nonprofits function versus government entities and for-profit businesses. Resources for nonprofits around fiscal management and nonprofit accounting. A lot of our folks that are startups are struggling to just. Do basic accounting and operational expenses. They're wearing many hats. And if we could provide some sort of resource or. Training for folks that are, you know, executive directors, but they're also the, you know, business officer. They're also the HR man. There are all of these things. How can we give them the skills to be able to do that financial management, grant management? Without spending a lot of time or, or making some mistakes that are hugely operational for them. Recurring review of our grant authority interpretation. So since our grant authority is new. We've had different interpretations of it over time. So it's just been something that we've had to adjust. You know, one person will say one thing, one person will say the other. So we want some consistency and we want to be able to really interpret it the best way. Because it does create barriers for us when we submit a grant. For review and all of a sudden. It's not within our authority and it's like, those were not the best surprises because we spent a lot of time working on it and. To have it say it's not within our authority, that's, that's tough. We would love to see increased DOJ support specific to nonprofit contracts and grant agreements. DOJ has been a great partner to us. But on our end, it feels, it seems like maybe they're not appropriately staffed to, to handle the workload that's given to them. For contracting and grant agreements. I think it just takes a lot of time for them to review the volume of work that they have. And I would love to see them get some more folks to be able to get through those things in a timely manner. They're super responsive to us, but a lot of our responses are just like. They're working through a tremendous workload and things get kind of bottlenecked. Depending on the subject matter and grant agreements is one of those. There's only maybe one or two folks that I'm aware of that work on grant agreements. And the more grants we do, the more we're going to need to see. More folks to do the work. And then streamlined process that support nonprofits that also mitigate risk. There's a lot of conversation about. You know, streamline, getting the payments out. But what if the nonprofits fail or what if, you know, it's a situation. Having guidelines around that financial risk and where the state sees. That financial risk would be helpful. Right now, it's kind of, you know, an internal risk assessment, but it would be. Good to have some guidelines and where it's accessible, where it's acceptable. To take a small amount of risk to be able to provide the services needed that, that nonprofits do give us. And I have a reference slide here that just shows. Our, we do have a website for our grants. We have our website for procurement. And then I linked our House Bill 4004 if folks want to review our, our authority. And that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you so very much. Before I send us all to break, I want to, I really want to thank everybody. All the departments who took the time to put this together. This was a ton of information. I definitely heard that, you know, it was tough to kind of do this, especially because we did this first one right after the holidays. So I do apologize, but I also want to confirm, we, we did ask for a lot of information. And we will likely continue to ask for a lot of information. I think it's really great for the folks who. Who are in this meeting, who come with us regularly. To, as you're getting to know what it is that we're trying to understand and do. Being able to answer these questions in that context, I think is very, very strong. And I really appreciate everyone who has taken the time to put all this together. So we are going to go ahead and take a break now. We'll. Take a little bit, we'll take like a 13 minute break and we'll come back at 11:30. Please definitely stretch, get your eyes away from the screen. We'll maybe have a little bit of time for debrief, but we're mostly going to use our time afterwards. To talk about what we want to hear in our February presentation. So. See you back at 11:30.
I used my break to go and shovel again, and it's two inches in bend right now. And it's still coming down like crazy.
I did not shovel, but while we're waiting for others, I was not able to use the chat during all the presentations. I just have a few questions that I wanted to still send forward. Not sure if we're going to put everything in a document that I could just add them to, or if I should just send them to someone to incorporate. So.
Amy, since we were using kind of the chat to collect those questions, do you have a suggestion? Because I know I'd also mentioned if someone was on the phone, we were going to need to figure out another way to collect that. So what do you recommend for folks who were not able to put their follow up question in the chat?
You can send your questions to me via email. I will put my email in the chat for you or for Helen, if you see the chat, you just can't contribute to it.
Yes, I can see it. I just can't. I don't know. It's a team thing. Doesn't like my computer.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
My address in the chat and you can feel free to email those to me and we'll get those all combined into one request today. Just thank you.
Great. Thanks so much.
Okay, so. Um, we've got about 30 minutes. And so I would, I think I would really just love to hear kind of people's initial reactions to the presentation. I got, I think at least for me, one, two, three, four, like kind of five things that started to feel like moving towards some tangible recommendations. And so I think we have enough time that if folks take just about a minute and you want to share kind of what your thoughts are after hearing the initial presentation, we should then have about 15 minutes to look over our questions for February and make any edits that we want to make to those before we send them to the departments. So I'll kind of just open it up if anyone wants to just share what some of your reflections or reactions are to the presentation.
I'm sorry, did you want us to do that in the chat?
No, I'm opening it up. Whoever would like to share.
Bettina. Yeah, so my, my strong reaction was that everything's by reimbursement, you know, and reimbursement is such a big barrier for, for lots of smaller agencies. So that's definitely something that I noted that reimbursement is the key thing to do. So you know, the provider sort of pre-loads the money and the staffing. And then there is, so that's one of the big things I felt, but I was encouraged by some of the creative approaches. So I think some departments are doing things already that are creative and there might be some things that we can just spread across departments. That will be helpful. Sorry, I was hopeful there. The, the question in my mind sometimes was too about how much does federal funding drive some bureaucracy? And it didn't get very clear to me how much money has those strings attached? And there's, you know, the lobbying needs to be at a different place for those because of the rules versus what the state is handing out.
Thank you. Heather.
Um, I just wanted to say that I think that in order for us to really make sense of all these presentations today, it would be really, really helpful if we could figure out a way to kind of do some sort of a chart that kind of compares them together. Springing this up yesterday with a small group that was the subcommittee working on. Some of our stuff is, it's really hard because it's like apples and bananas and pizza. It's like, it's hard to get the through line. So I think it would be helpful if we could figure out a way to do that, just to make sense of it. Because I agree with Bettina, I think some folks are, have really great practices that maybe could be shared.
Helen.
Um, I just also want to note Saito's comment in the chat because I think that's similar to me. I was having the thought in my mind during the presentations of how many of these agencies have actually shared with one another? And hopefully it was also a good opportunity for them to think about their practices differently after hearing from colleagues. The thing that actually stood out to me the most is I don't understand where the decision-making authority on what procedures to use come from. You know, some agencies are using CFR, some agencies are referring to a grant committee, some agencies are using DAS, some agencies are using DOJ. So I mean, it's just clear to me that of course, you know, grantees are, you know, understandably confused because all of these authorities are coming from different places. So being able to figure out how those authorities or how those decisions are being made, I think would go a long ways. And then also there are clearly some entities that I think that we could focus a little bit more on that might, you know, address 60 to 80% of the contracting going out to nonprofits. And to think about what is going to be, you know, the best return on our time and investment to facilitate those processes a little bit more smoothly. And then I guess the other thing that I couldn't help noticing is the agencies that are newer and have had the, the benefit of kind of evaluating and seeing what's out there, what maybe has worked and what has, you know, caused some pain points seem like they have practices that are more in line with the principles that we're striving towards. So again, just wondering about the authority that those agencies receive to be able to make things smoother versus maybe agencies that have been around longer and have more bureaucracy or hierarchy to, to manage as they're trying to make these changes.
Uh, everything Helen said and everything everybody else said. Yeah, I also was struck while listening. I was like, is there a magic person who gets to just make a decision? Like, is there just someone who is unnamed? Like, I, I think I was just getting really stuck on that and it's clear. It's clear. It's not clear. I also, I, I mean, I'm so glad we had at least one legislator on this call. You know, I think one of the big things that we'll be mentioning in our recommendations, or at least like in some sort of narrative is just like, like, we've gotten a lot of confirmation that this is very, very confusing and unclear. And, you know, when you work with a foundation, like, it's not different program officer to program officer. And so I just, I, I, I just got profound confirmation of why our nonprofits are so frustrated. So I just really appreciate the presentations and I, you know, what Helen said, like, I, I saw a lot of that with Delk around like the changes that they've made as a direct result of the experiences they've had. So I, I also, I'm really thankful that there seems, there seems to be a lot of intention and thoughtfulness going into like making this better and an acknowledgement that this is a far from ideal situation. So thank you.
So what I did not hear is anybody acknowledging that it's so siloed. That there are so many different practices by every agency and there is no timely payment plan for State of Oregon. There is no inflation or cost of living built into contracts. That is, doesn't exist. There is no acknowledgement of de minimis. So that part seems like, you know, recognition of OMB de minimis or an indirect rate would be, seems like it would be something that would be, you know, foundational and same with timely payments and same with inflation or cost of living. So, you know, when we were meeting with the project plan team yesterday, maybe we can check off these first three or four things that all of us say, yes, that's the thing. And then we go forward from there to identify more.
Tarnish.
Yeah, I, I'll just add a little emphasis to some of what's been said before. I appreciated that ODHS and OHA have done some collaboration and have thought about, you know, ways to share systems and approaches. So I think that's an interesting line of thought to pursue and those are two of the, you know, big kids on the block. So a little to Helen's point, if you were to focus in on a few agencies, you could have significant impact. And that might provide some clues in terms of a pilot approach or a staged approach. I was also just intrigued, same as others, about where folks have autonomy and where they have restrictions. And in OIA's presentation, for example, they talked about getting their grant authority recently. I'd like to learn more what that actually means, like how that happens. And then what creativity they could bring to bear in that. So, so that broader question of where you have autonomy is another place to explore. And then I'll just again say, I appreciate that we have many public servants who are trying to be thoughtful about this and, and figure out ways to, you know, work with systems that are intentionally or unintentionally difficult. So, and reiterating some of what we heard.
Thank you. Bettina, before I call on you again, I just want to give a moment. If there is anyone who hasn't shared yet as far as their reactions, go ahead, Tim. Okay, sorry, still having computer issues. So I'm on two computers. So I think the thing, everything everybody else sent, like Felicita, it was, you know, a lot. One thing that I thought was really interesting was the, I guess, hearing from the presentations from agencies that are part of the larger agency, like ODE specifically, I know I've heard from ODE funders, we're not part of ODE, which is very confusing when ODE is in your email address, for example. And so I think for me, it was really interesting to hear some of their rules and to know that we were kind of given some different information in previous experiences. So that was something that struck me, especially since we didn't hear from some of the divisions that were on the agenda. So I guess I still wanted to know more within larger agencies like ODE, where those differences come from. So that was a big piece that stuck out to me. And then another piece that I wanted to mention is just, it, it did strike me to see a state indirect rate in the 40th percentile and to know, you know, so if they have that themselves, they have that experience, or at least they know enough to know why that might be. And yet there was so much content around the de minimis and the 15% and the cap. And the only mention I heard, which I appreciate, but was that tribes sometimes can get that additional amount. But why not organizations that also have a federally negotiated indirect rate that's higher than 15%? So those are two things that stuck out to me that I haven't necessarily heard a whole lot of content around yet. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Bettina.
It was just one more thought as someone who likes ideas is, you know, I've heard a lot that program managers are working directly with their, the people they fund. I also heard of some places where they work together, you know, to make contracting work well, but it's not really a standard. You know, I, you know, I work with Delk and the system that they're using is one that we just got. And while it's new, it was really hard for all our staff. So that, you know, what I know from project management in other places, where the business partner or the users are involved, we don't have much of that in terms of designing the system. But there were some elements that I heard in the presentation where it's existing. And I wonder if that can become the way you work, you know, that the system is developed with the users in mind and they were, they are at the table as the IT people at the start, you know, at the state develop them or as they do a RFP. So I heard some, but little. And I think many of the issues we have in process could be resolved if we were at the table designing the systems.
Thank you. So I'm going to wrap this up with just a few things that I noted. Some of them are repeats of what you all said. Some of them were a little bit different. But one was, I think, just that even the consistent tracking of payment timeline. So it sounds like some departments had a whole dashboard of like, where are we going and what are we doing? Five days, seven days? Others were like, we don't really track that. So like having some kind of consistent standard for how those payments are tracked. I do think there needs to be some sort of consequence, like on the organization side, essentially the consequence is you don't get paid. On the agency side, there doesn't seem to be any kind of consequence for having not met that payment. That could also be fixed as we were just talking, using an advanced payment model, although we heard reimbursement was the predominant across all agencies. Everyone also acknowledged they are 100% capable of doing something different. They've just chosen to keep that bucket real small. And so I think we can definitely talk about, more about that. In our recommendations, I think if we want to make a recommendation indirect, we're going to have to be specific that it's state general fund, given kind of everything we heard about other types of funds. So that's just something for us to keep in mind. And I do think that we should be looking at that 15%, given where the federal government's going anyway. And I do think that we should be looking at that 15%, given where the federal government's going anyway. Contracts that are going to be longer than 12 months need to be adjusted for inflation, especially when these are direct service contracts or the, and/or the outcomes and service expectations need to be reduced if the necessary increases are not approved, right? This is dealing with kind of the legislative problem, and that, that has to be clear to legislators, that if you don't, you know, put in the money that this is requesting, it will result in an X number decrease per dollar or per whatever. And that really does put a little bit more burden, I think, on the agencies to understand what the costs mean to their vendors, to their, and to their providers. And I really liked the prepayment schedule, the projected payments. I think that could solve a lot of problems. And it really is within the state's interest to not have disruptions in services. And I think in particular, this prepayment model should probably be required for any services that require community members to income qualify or incident qualify. So if you have to be under a certain income,